Council members are present, Your Honor.
Had to forget something, folks. It's just that's the way it works. Captain, would you lead us in the spike salute? Thank you very much. Council, first item of business this evening is the consent agenda. We have five items, including minutes, payroll checks, and a couple of minor matters. Get a motion?
Move to approve consent.
Do in a second. Good motion by Mr. Elwood, second by Ms. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Very much. This time, we will move to citizens' comments. This is the time at which if you would like to address a city council on an item not on tonight's agenda, this is the time for that. We'll start here in city council chambers first and then move online. Would like to speak, raise a hand, or move to the podium here in chambers. Three minutes, starting with name and address, record, goes online, is indicating the chat. Star nine. On the right number there, star nine. All right, again on the. Anyone here in chamber? Seeing no one move to the podium, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Much. And we will move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. First thing on tonight's agenda, introductions. You have with us tonight Captain Lynch from the Snoqualmie North End Police Department. He's got some introductions that we've long been waiting. Captain?
Mayor. Council members for having us. F. I have the distinct honor tonight of standing in for the chief who's over in Snoqualmie at a budget meeting. He would much rather be here, but I wrestled him for it and I got the job to be here. So I get to unveil three new police officers and our newest addition, the mental health professional. I want to go through and give a little bit of background on each one of them. And tell them, have them tell their story if they want to. If they want to say a couple of words, they can. This time last year, we down ten bodies, department. About twenty, twenty-two officers with sergeants. So ten, when we lose ten, a pretty big hit. Ability to cover calls, to be out on the road, have bodies back up. We have started to climb out of that hole. And as most of you know, when we lose an officer, to replace the officer, it's not a, just advertise in the newspaper and we'll hire somebody. It is probably about a three to four month hiring process. If we go with the entry level officer who has never been to the academy, once they get hired, they have to wait for an academy class. Once they have their date, they go away for about four and a half months. Leave the police academy, and then when they come back, they're going to be put through about a three to three and a half month field training program where they're assigned an officer to train them, not allowed to do anything by themselves. There's, they're always being watched. They're being graded every night and every day that they come to work. And then once they make it through all of that, and they're finally able to go out solo patrol and fill a spot on the schedule. These three officers that you see here all graduated in October. So one of them, I believe, one of them just switched from their first FTO to their second. The other two will be doing that shortly. So they're early on in their field training. So when you're out and about and you see a two man car, the training car. Oh, I'll introduce these guys. Officer Anthony Lemon. Played football and basketball at Liberty High School in Renton before obtaining his associate's degree from the Bellevue Community College, then going on to receive his bachelor of science degree at Central Washington University where he majored in law, justice. And Officer Corey Hendricks was born in Bellevue, grew up in Snoqualmie, where he graduated from Mount Si High School. He worked for the city of Issaquah Parks Department for approximately eleven years before answering the call to serve his community as a police officer. And he and his family do live in the North Bend area. Officer Nick Shogan ended college at Idaho State University before enlisting with the United States Marine Corps where he was a military police officer, embassy guard. He's currently serving in the Army National Guard and also lives in the North Bend area. Then comes to our mental health professional. You guys have been hearing about this position for a few months now. And I wanted to bring her to actually face the conversations that we've been having. This is mental health professional Stephanie Butler. Prior to coming to the Snoqualmie Police Department, Stephanie worked as a school-based mental health therapist, clinical manager of children and adolescents, licensed social worker, lead clinical therapist, and she does hold the certification to be a mental health professional. Brings with her a bachelor of science degree in special education that she received from Ole Miss, a master's in social work, Savannah State University in Georgia. All four very different people, all four very different personalities and different path get here tonight, standing up of you. But the one thing that they all have, heard the call, serve, and they do have servant hearts. It's, we're lucky to have still want to do this job, themselves in arm's way. Very difficult to find good candidates these days. And we really lucky with these three officers and mental health professional. They are quality people. And they're going to represent you guys and serve this community very well. That's all that I have. I could talk about these guys for an hour, but. That's, and leave, or would like.
Everyone, I just wanted to say thank you so much, not only for reporting this position, but getting the position and allowing it to be some. I mean, Captain couldn't have said it better. The call to serve is something that is very near and dear. For many years to come.
Yeah, so I'm Officer Corey Hendricks, born and raised out here, a lifelong resident. Was with City VIS for actually approximately fifteen years. Snoqualmie, when I, enforcement's always been a strong interest of mine. Well, I'm glad I was able to, I mean, to my dreams. Snoqualmie was always hands down my choice agency to go with. I'm thankful to be here tonight and be with them. Again, like, is my hometown. I look forward to serving this in the North and Snoqualmie and make this.
All right, well, that's, that's just fine. Counsel, I imagine you've got a few words. I personally want to shake each of these folks' hands as well. Put down this in first.
Just want to thank them for stepping forward and we look forward to having you in our community.
I second that. Thank you for choosing Snoqualmie North End. We need you greatly. We're so excited to have you and and for all of the officers. Yeah, that's exciting, this new, working out. I hope.
Didn't agree more with those sentiments and appreciate your call to service. All of you, actually in the mental health area, have to deal with a lot of tricky situations and what I, what I can say, my experience here on council and with my colleagues. You continue to have our, we see you as a vital asset for our community as well as making our community more vibrant place to live. Your presence is known. People appreciate it and accept it. So know that you're coming into a welcoming environment, one that I hope that your careers can thrive in. Even if you go on to someplace else, hopefully these formative years will be awesome for you. And thank you for stepping up and thank you for becoming part of our community. Really appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you for choosing to serve and you for choosing to serve here. Or to, reacting more and in your own town.
Thank you all from the bottom of my heart and how much I appreciate your willingness to serve, especially these days. You know how difficult it must be to recruit and candidates that are quality. Of you. So thank you so much for doing this. Have your back, as Mr. Elwood said. Let us know what tools you need from us. Make your job easier. Easy job sitting back here, you don't. So let us know what we can do to help you. How much we all appreciate you every day of. So much.
All my colleagues said exactly what I wanted, in their own words, of course. So I'll follow up saying, thank you so much for being courageous in your individual selves, doing what you want and love to do. Your passion will lead you forward. The community will love you deeper. I, in fact, would like to get each, know each and every one of you if it's possible. So much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, guys. We, we need you. We want you. And we're glad you're here. Corey, I guess we won't be seeing each other at the gym anymore. You're going to be working. And and I just wanted to say that we have needed an influx of new talented. Appreciate your willingness to serve and I look forward to not meeting you on a professional basis anytime soon.
Doesn't escape my notice that we heard a lot about North Bend and the valley and, and, and living here and being a part of the community and that is a fantastic result, world that you're here and the support that you've got from fellow officers coming here this evening. So thank you again, guys. With that, we will move on to commission and committee reports. We will start with Ms. Miller, Community and Economic Development.
Really hard to follow that. Okay, CED met today, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, of course, at three o'clock, approximately in the adjournment room. Council members Jocelyn and L were, were present. We had three items on our agenda, beginning with North End Arts and Industries. They led a presentation, Deb Landers led that, I should say, and updated us on many creative endeavors, which include classes and up events. So that eat and no, right? On a regular basis. Our second and item was with Mike Hardy and he put the city North End, of course, he enlightened us CWM grant for restoration project. Finally, David Miller, our city administrator, led a discussion on impact. It's with a work study to follow Mount CED, again, December sixth.
Ms. Miller, Mr. Elwood, Nancy Administration.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will defer to Councilmember Gothel because I was not able to attend that meeting. Thank you. The Finance Administration Committee met November first, May twenty-two, met the city hall. We discussed one of the ordinances on tonight, a two-year extension of the ordinance increasing solid waste, recycling rates, and amending the D P schedule. That's your mention. Order of continuing service with them and there's some increase in there due to CPI. We've seen over the last. We also discussed the financial RFP software scoring, vendor chosen support and documentation. The first conversation will. We talked about a citywide financial sustainability analysis, and then also on tonight's agenda is the ordinance setting the twenty-three. And then the other thing on is a public hearing tonight is we also discussed the twenty-three and.
That's a lot. Public health and safety. It's Cohen.
Public health and safety met on November eighth, four p.m., here in city hall. We had a police update. Chief Phipps provided the following update. That update on staffing for Snoqualmie and North Bend Police, an update on the use of force draft, an update that they will continue discussions. Discussion regarding a new program where investigation teams incorporate local community representatives to investigations. North Bend residents can participate in an objective community representative team. Residents will train to join. Currently, North Bend has no representative. They're planning to re-implement Coffee with a Cop, planning to further develop relationships with students at schools via school visits, and planning to offer a safe sitter education course to youth babysitting. Captain Lynch discussed the jail contracts, Issaquah, Score, and King County. Next, we had a fire update. City Chief Ho provided the following updates, aid on staffing for Eastside Fire and Rescue, County Training Consortium training, eight to Woodinville Training Grounds, working to maintain consistency and training practices among King County Fire. Chief Clark introduced Deputy Chief Ho provided an update on his last full day as chief before he retired. We next had a discussion on fireworks. Our city attorney, Lisa Marshall, discussed the city's recommendation to ban aerial fireworks, noting that it must be done one year in advance. And the administrator, David Miller, discussed the idea of community fireworks events provided for a safe, positive method of aerial fireworks. And we discussed. City recommended the ordinance for N B M C R E protection orders to be moved to consent at the following meeting. Our next meeting will be December thirteenth, m. Your Honor.
Ms. Cohen, I'm back. Transportation and Public Work.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first two items that we addressed in the ten item, or eleven item agenda for the Asian Public Works Committee will be discussed in the next public hearing coming in just a moment. So let that ride. We had a bunch of closeouts of projects, just to let some folks know. The Train Depot Roof Replacement Project was closed down. Approval of the Sixth Street Water Main roadway improvements closeout. We had a closeout of the Ribery Creek Sentiment Pond Maintenance Project. Mr. Moore gave us a good news about the closeout of the Southwest Ten Street project. Also, a closeout of the, and Guard Rail replacement project. We talked about the transportation element briefly, and Mr. Mursenko came in with money, lots of money. Once again, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a federal countywide small jurisdiction grant program for the future outside road roundabout project. He also brought in another five hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, small match of the program, small jurisdiction program, once again, shared trail and Estrian Bridge project, South Fort Homie River. Mr. Moore talked a little bit about traffic control at Main and Second Avenue North. And of course, we've already implemented or are implementing those changes as we speak. That was it, our meeting. Our next meeting will be November twenty-ninth, city hall.
Mr. Loud. Mr. Rosen, Mayor.
Your Honor, we did not meet once, twice, but actually three times since we last met here. We had a budget work study over twenty-fifth where we I got a budget update and then talked about human community service request and decision cards, followed by special work study on November twenty-first, November first, sorry, that was here. We had, that presentation was the housing needs assessment. Then we followed that up with special budget works the, on November eighth here. We had a discussion, spirited discussion, I would say, with decision cards and we got our, pretty much finalized. It will be rolling out tonight. That's all, Your Honor.
Very much. Mr. Gothel, back to you. You signed fire and rescue.
Thank you. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Meeting started, it was on November ninth. We started about an hour early to celebrate Chief's retirement. We had a lot of people, yeah, Issaquah Mayor to come up talk. We also had several senators. Seattle Fire Chief. It was a fun event. Talk about that. So we did start our board meeting at four o'clock. We just. During that, we basically approved the minutes. We talked about the new strategic term that's coming out. We talked about our two thousand twenty-three legislative agenda and agenda calendar. Then we again opened up another area for people to come up, rec, or rec. Once that was completed, we had the bittersweet of retiring and providing the oath of office to the incoming Chief. That was the end of it. And we all eat the cake that was brought and celebrate new chief and old chief. One of the more fun Eastside Fire and Rescue bittersweet.
Big change there. And again, that's incoming plane. Very much. Stemming for the commissions.
The Planning Commission last met on October twenty-seventh and provided initial feedback to staff preparing updates to the thresholds under which the state environmental policy act, or CIPA, review is required. There are optional new threshold limits available through the regulations subject to amendment to the city's CIPA regulations. Planning Commission will next be at a special meeting on November sixteenth at six-thirty for a public hearing, deliberation, and possible recommendation on the amendments to the CIPA, CIPA regulations, adjusting those flexible threshold. Parks Commission met on October twenty-sixth and determined how they wish to spend the two thousand twenty-two small park improvement budget that was established for their use, including striping for pickleball courts at the E, at EJ Roberts Park tennis courts, and purchasing a bike rack at EJ Roberts Park, additional dog waste bag dispensers for city parks, and picnic tables for city hall. Parks Commission also discussed the final results, results from the Parks Survey and planning for the upcoming Parks Workshop. Parks, Parks Commission Workshop will be held at city hall at six-thirty on November thirtieth. And staff and Parks Commission will address results of the city's park survey and how that and other public input and information has informed the draft updates to the Parks Element of the Comprehensive Plan. The Economic Development Commission did not meet in October. EDC will join the city council on November twenty-ninth for a work study session regarding the Economic Development Action Plan. Thank you.
You know, regional committee, so got a regional committee report?
County Board of Health met on October thirteenth at eleven-thirty via Zoom. Dr. Jeff Duchin discussed COVID boosters, flu, monkeypox. The COVID nineteen Omicron variant over the summer, but has currently decreased in all age groups. We are still seeing about two deaths per day and COVID is the fifth leading cause of death in King County. Ninety-one percent of the deaths are in people sixty years old or older. COVID boosters, you only need to be five years or older and had your last vaccine in at least the last two months. You're in Snoqualmie Valley. Snoqualmie Valley Hospital has a drive through option, is very easy, free. They're saying the winter surge is inevitable for COVID influenza and especially concerning us RSV and our children. So make a plan, worried to wear a mask indoors and in crowded situations, and please get vaccinated. And if you're sick, stay home. Monkeypox numbers are way down. Probably going away. And the most concerning is fentanyl overdose deaths in County. Had sixty-six deaths in July, a hundred and ten in August, and so far, a hundred and forty deaths.
While we're on the idea of regional committees, I'd want to mention to council, if you have applied for one of the SCA committees, please be sure that is aware. Considering if we reach that, and as we start other E and committee assignments here. Moving on to the main agenda, oh dear. Council's favorite agenda item of the year is.
Remove that, just the consent agenda?
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the thought. Motion to adjourn. I would really appreciate that particular thought, but I'll find both of those to be out of order. And instead, number seven is presentation, the mayor's budget message for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget. Now, council, I will say that a, a, I'm going to do a portion of a overall remarks. I have submitted remarks to the, for the record, you'll get that as well. So I will try and be a little bit more brief. There are some important things to get out. So with that, I am pleased to present to you the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget, the city of North. This balanced budget reflects community priorities, infrastructure, maintenance, citywide improvements as determined by your city council. In addressing the priorities of the community, this budget includes multiple ongoing and new infrastructure improvements serve our residents and businesses well into the future. We are making these investments in a positive, fiscally prudent way. We enter this new biennial budget cycle during a period of high inflation and with the very real potential for a recession on the horizon. City's tradition of fiscal conservatism will continue, as council recognizes is a necessary aspect fighting fiscally sustainable, sound city operations. On adoption, this budget formalizes the policy direction set by council for all city government, department, programs, and services, while ensuring the best financial decisions for our community. An overriding theme is one that honors our commitment, maintain small town care, enhancing the quality of life for all residents. We do this by completing projects that move our community forward, investments in critical infrastructure, by supporting business and economic balance, fiscal sustainability, and investment ensures a healthy future for our city. In regard to operations, our city has grown in citizens and needs these past ten years. This necessitates changes in how we deliver services and meet the growing expectation of our residents. This budget is designed to keep pace with these changes. Council made the sound decision to invest in personnel will help us achieve community goals and available resources. Like you, city staff pivoted throughout the. Like you, city staff pivoted throughout the pandemic. With that, we were presented with opportunities to strengthen our employee satisfaction and retention. Changes and a few additions have occurred in all city departments, including Public Works, Finance, Planning, Administrative Services. Continue to believe that we have the best professionals voted to a community, are none. We will continue to support and celebrate personnel who serve our community. Public safety continues to be a top priority for the city. The single largest expense to our general fund. Nearly forty-two percent of the city's eleven-plus million dollar general fund budget is allocated to public safety services. Nationally, police agencies have been struggling with recruitment. Our department is no exception. Earlier tonight, you heard a little bit about the vision that we'd been in, and the thankful place that we are now in. I am happy to report that while staffing levels are still not optimum, they are steadily increasing. We believe we'll be back full strength very soon. Current contract for police services provides for an annual five percent increase in the cost for services, full staffing of eight officers. Maximum cost for twenty twenty-three is expected to be approximately million and two point four three million in twenty. And we continue to be exemplary supported by East Side Fire and Rescue. Where our local station has six emergency service personnel and in each eight-hour shift. An annual cost of something one point three two million, three, one point three nine. Council recognizes that a healthy community is one that supports physical health and importantly, one that provides for the nurturing and funding of mental health sort. And a little earlier tonight, you heard one of those things in regard to the hiring of a mental health professional, work directly with our Human Support Services for seniors, youth, and all adults. It's been one of the hardest hit areas these past few years. As they've ramped up, meet COVID-driven needs will continue to impact operations for years to Your council responded, increasing support through the budget for our human services grants. Last year, thirty-eight percent and an additional thirty-three percent this year. Recognition, huge increased strain pandemic has put on our residents. Everyone should hear that significant increases in human service. This biennial budget will provide three hundred and six thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, and will make another allocation for twenty twenty-four for receiving grants eight this coming year. Since the last biennial budget, we, like our own businesses and nonprofit organizations, have worked tirelessly through the COVID pandemic. This biennium, through the American Rescue Plan Act, we anticipate concentrating approximately one point six million dollars supporting our community's social service needs, investing in economic development and tourism, and public facility improvements, city-related services. Also of note, this is kind of a little bit of a repeat, but did want to point out again, the hiring of the behavioral health specialist. That was in part through a grant championed by Washington State's Fifth District Representative Lisa Callen, along with follow-up funding by both councils, Snow and North. This physician specializes in the treatment of mental health, substance abuse disorders. Will now be at work for you, both cities throughout the biennium. The end of twenty twenty-two, city will have made significant progress toward the completion of the new wastewater treatment. YWTP. It's important to note that the wastewater treatment plan improvements largely paid for local development projects and remaining costs paid via user fees. When complete, we'll provide much-needed safety and redundancy improvements for our community and our environment. The updated plant will also be prepared to accept new source capacity, such as the recently approved Meadowbrook Sewer Ability Local Improvement District, as well as potential conversion older septic neighborhoods. Could they choose to move from less environmentally sustainable septic system? When it comes to multimodal transportation, our city leaders committed to connectivity, safety, all residents. And it shows our ongoing transportation improvement. Two of note are adding sidewalks, crosswalks, through sidewalk gap. And you're fixing aging existing sidewalks through the sidewalk. Was that my book?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah. I think that was to take a sip of water. We'll let you off of it for that one. I just have to go back to the start, start up. All right. I was mentioning our sidewalk gap program, which is where we're filling in where where there's uh holes in the existing uh connectivity uh between two areas. In addition to that, we also have a um program for the sidewalk replacement for existing sidewalks throughout the city, and we've been working through that. Few examples, just in this past year, was the second street between Ballarat and Bendigo, North Benway near Rio Bravo, us and the crosswalk at the Snoqualmie Valley Trail. Tanner Trail Extension. Worcester Woods Neighborhood and Downtown North Bend along North Benway and Bendigo. Be a lot more of that coming in the Transportation is changing north. With that, so is the ease with which you get around town. Your conflict means reduced maintenance cost, increased view shed, decreased vehicle pollution, found about creation. The City Council continues in its commitment, guide our community, do our part, in the health of the Snoqualmie River. Serving water resources in North Bend takes many forms. One of those is eliminating leaks in the system. Twenty fourteen, the city committed to replacing what was then fourteen point five miles of old asbestos concrete water meter. To date, we've replaced over four point seven miles. System water loss is dramatically decreasing. Including now that the Sixth Street line, the Silver Creek River, and the Second Street. Next up. And we also have replaced approximately sixty percent of customer water meters, a program begun in twenty twenty. We anticipate completing the replacements by the end of three. These two large budget projects, together with our water conservation ordinance and the saving water partnership make North Bend one of the most water-conscious communities in the state. Our city council recognizes critical need in the Snoqualmie Valley for diverse housing options. Working, living, playing, North Bend requires a robust diversity of housing choices, a strong local job market. Last year, the city was honored with the Smart Community Smart Project Award for the adoption of the Form-based code in the downtown commercial zone. This code serves as a land development regulation, fosters predictable built results, a high-quality using physical form rather than a separation of uses, it's organizing. A lot of great words to say, it's more about what you see and what it is. Form-based code will be applied as we move through this next biennium and will help to ensure future redevelopment, it's the character of our community, providing more housing options. On full policies such as this work balance, needs for jobs, services, and housing, while adhering to our growth management. We do expect two affordable housing projects will reach completion during the coming biennium. Including Taylor Town, Habitat Humanity, Unity, seven town homes offered at as as much as thirty percent below market. And the river-run apartments is a multifamily housing development. Will have twenty-eight of its one hundred and twenty-eight apartments designated for households earning eighty percent less. These should be in the man. Additional diverse housing coming available this year is twenty-eight townhomes in our downtown. And the two hundred and twelve Cedar River multifamily housing. Which includes a four-acre city park connected to Tanner Landing Park, providing direct access middle. Since two thousand and nine, city budget has benefited, growing revenues keep pace with corresponding increased expenditures. We've seen real estate excise taxes, sales tax revenue, slightly higher than projected during the twenty twenty-three biennial budget. And even business and occupation or B and O taxes all exceed a regional budget. Strong revenues have made possible the ability to meet growing costs and staffing, serve our growing community. Note, single-family home development has slowed down dramatically. That will continue as we move through this next Nearly all approved subdivisions are complete, nearly so. While I mentioned several multifamily homes now underway, those two will be in a few years. No other significant projects are currently in the works. It's reasonable to say rapid home building cycle of the past decade is nearly over. This will result in reduced revenue from development sources. We are planning that expectation. A bright note, creation opportunities. We have a lot of park improvement projects that are an integral part of our mountain town. This year, council approved the launch, the design phase for a wholly revamped town Taylor Park, the associated McClellan Street running alongside it. Council also approved a companion design effort for the riverfront, Bendigo two oh two, next to the bridge to down. Watch for opportunities weigh in on the amenities and design as facilities coming in the very near. When complete, residents will have added connectivity to our downtown, more efficient parking along McClellan, additional trails and riverfront amenities that are not easily New park is also on the horizon, partnership with the Cyview Metropolitan Park District, called the Tenant Trailhead. Likely include a forty-five stall parking lot, restroom facilities, and picnic facilities. And feature major additions to hiking and mountain bike trails throughout. Include a connection to the Snoqualmie Point Park, our west onto the broader rattlesnake system. Construction is anticipated to commence. Council's continued focus, creating an attractive environment, new businesses, adds exciting amenities to our highly livable community. Many have been noted this past year, such as the Wyndham Hotel, Snoqualmie Valley Athletic Center, and the Youth Activity Center, YAC. New businesses expected to break down on this coming year include all logistics, the Cicon Industrial bringing new jobs to our and we're looking forward to the IAN Council. Along with the city commissioners, professional staff, support and advise us. Always looking ahead and planning for our community's future. It's how we both maintain our commitment, balance fiscal responsibility, also successfully delivering services and amenities residents. As a policy commitment of council, look forward in a strategic way, support a variety of research studies to gain insight into that. This past year and coming up, we'll see the results of many of these planning efforts across multiple disciplines. Few of the tasks in process are soon to launch within this biennium, include updated comprehensive plan due for completion by the end of twenty twenty-four. This document is a policy guide for nearly all that we do. We are working chapter by chapter, word that up. Currently in review is the transportation element, be followed by topics such as housing. Input from many sectors, and in commission is the lead advisor to council. We are well into the development of an economic development. First of its kind for our city. This plan will answer to council's request for holistic and that fosters sustainable investment, creates family wage jobs, provides more goods, services, and amenities, better meet residents' needs. We expect this plan to be completed by twenty twenty-three, our economic development section spearheading that. And we are nearing completion, comprehensive housing needs assessment, housing action. This was made possible by the by the State Department of Commerce Grant. Where North Bend partnered with Nation Duval and Snoqualmie, as community-minded cities, coexisting valley that rely on one another's and others' success. We agree that we should all share the responsibility for achieving equitable distribution, diverse housing options. North Bend served as the lead city for this one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant project. The Housing Action Plan is anticipated in July. Finally, want to bring special attention to our staff, their exemplary work obtaining funding for city, meet our needs. Earlier, Mr. Loudon back was mentioning yet the latest grant we've received. I want you to know, we are now over seven million in grant commitments throughout this last biennium. We will see many of these projects in in the near future. Grants serve as an incredible savings for residents, and they provide for new and exciting amenities and services. The ten grants that I had on my current list, I'm only going to mention just a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant called Complete Streets. This grant provides for the design of the entire length of North Benway in regard to frontage use, beautification, lighting, accessibility, activity. End to end, city end to end. Getting to see some of the first ideas of that work very soon. Hundred and forty thousand plus dollar cooperative watershed management. For habitat restoration along Rivery Creek, the left bank, the south for the Snoqualmie River, in collaboration with the mountains to sound green white. Five hundred and forty-one thousand plus State Route two oh two, shared use trail sign grant for a trail and bridge along the north side of State Route two oh two, ending at Fourth Avenue, extending west over the South Fork River, that will connect to an existing trail system at the Finally, I'll mention approximately seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar North Benway hind and overlay project in the South Fork Snoqualmie River crossing, extending to the western city limit. This one, it also should include roadway beautification and restriping lanes to complement a new trail that will connect on town to the A lot going on, a lot more to come, a lot more in the full application as we're doing. So in wrapping up, I am very proud to serve as your mayor. Being engaged in a positive way to give back to the community. Being engaged in a positive way to give back to the community that is my home is. One of the most rewarding aspects is the opportunity to work in collaboration with our. When we best function as a team, we're open to new ideas. We meet. This is how we successfully find ways to enhance unity, maintaining our small town atmosphere. And very much that same thing. Thank city staff commissioners, their dedication, working closely with council. Achieve the goals, mission calls for, and our budget always. So we continue to invest in the high quality life that we cherish here in North. Can count on me. And our council stay mindful fiscal limitations. That is why this budget reflects, that is what this budget reflects, what I am committed to executing. So support. Mop mystic, we move forward into the new year and to a new budget cycle. My unwavering commitment, serve our highly livable. Includes item number seven. Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Ms. Miller and all of you. Your support. Item number eight on your agenda, AB twenty two dash one three five. This is a public hearing being continued. Ordinance adopting the twenty twenty three property tax levy. Mr. Gold, do you have any updates for us before we go back to the public hearing?
Just have a couple. That were asked last time and have a well, one answer. Earlier today, I sent out a tool, I sent an email to council and the mayor and some staff. Regarding a tool that is an Excel spreadsheet that I worked with a consultant in my prior job. Adapted for North Bend's usage, along with a website to the assessor's office. And the impact of test valuation on their individual. This is the best way to answer the questions as we don't have the rates, you don't. Hear them, open with the assessor's office many times. They I did ask them a question about best violation and it's not a one. And it's really our honestly, our responsibility is how much city. Recruits every year. Hope that this will prove helpful, be able to put it up on the website. Of that, so that people can members in to see what their violation is and. Or respond corresponding cost for their home and what part of that is the city versus the other. And there you can always follow up too with the Department of Assessment. Have a really nice website. And it looks, shows you so much information. Blaming, but it'll help people understand. Fortunately, we don't have the twenty two thousand twenty three numbers yet. Update the spreadsheet, do beef. We'll get that as soon as I get that all for that on a website and then I'll forward it.
As mentioned, this is a continuing hearing, so at this time we'll move to. Comment. You are member of the public either here in council chambers or online. Comment on this agenda item. If you're here in chambers, you'll step to the podium. With your name, address. You'll have up three minutes online, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. Sitting here in chambers, is there anyone wishing to? Regarding this. Nobody making a move and being a very concerned about even moving at all. Soon not. About online.
No one at this time.
No one online. Hey, that. Was the public hearing. We'll move towards action. Mr. Ohwood for finance and administration, I believe this came through your committee. Who would look you to make a motion started discussion.
Do your honor, I'll make a motion to get us started. I'm assuming there'll be some healthy debate. Once the motion is made, which is what our community needs. So I make a motion to approve AB twenty two one three five and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty three property tax levy. Set forth in option number two, one percent increase as a first and final reading.
Motion, do I have a second? Second. Mr. Ohwood, please speak to the motion.
Thank you. This is a topic that comes to us every year. Throughout the years, we've had a lot of roller coaster debates, healthy. I will be supporting this motion. I think the incremental growth is what's vital to this particular levy. The numbers that Mr. Ghul be presenting down the road on the incremental growth will be helpful. Support this in yours ass, I'll support it tonight, and I do hope it pass, thank you.
And Mr. So when you were the second.
Similarly, I think it's the due diligence on the part of the city to take this one percent increase. It's allowed under state law, especially in these times of. High inflation, that's our most significant aspect of the city's budget, and we have no. Choice but to continue to. A competitive wages to a staff which we have heard acknowledged yet again tonight as one of the best. The state and I agree with that, but that comes at some cost and. Believe this is about a twenty thousand dollar. Overall increase spread across the city, and I think of it a bit like a retirement plan. Miss one year of increase, even a small increase ten years from now or sometime. And it costs the city a position or it's the base level of funding that the city operates on. It's the most stable thing based that the city has this. I think it's our responsibility in fact to. How painful, take this one percent increase to keep this city on a sound natural thing going into the future and to not do so would. Yeah, I would be remiss, so I too will be supporting the motions this evening. Thank you.
So now I'll look down toward Mr. God help.
Going to have to disagree. I find this to be really amazing that after we get this presentation of rural housing. We take a look at, and we say a healthcare worker who averaged eighty one thousand. Dollars a year good supporting even max rent. Typical. Pretty tax, most of our residents. Some a little over seven hundred and fifty dollars in today's dollars per month. It's an awful lot. We're looking for affordability. Yes, we'll say that it's a small percentage that the city is taking at one percent. At some point, we have to make a stand to say, yeah, continue to support. Now, access and everything. On us, and if you want to have little housing, this isn't the way to do it. I continue to say it's it is a small amount, largest amount that we keep thinking this would be additional. Value that we'll get in their homes, and then on top of it, the additional structure. I'm trying to. Little housing.
Sir Loudon back.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Smiller. Ms. Rosen.
Keep it short. I'm usually opposed to property tax increases unless there's a pressing need, I believe. Asked, I supported it for public safety, something I would consider necessary. Today meets that those goals and needs. That's really all I had to say, but I will follow up. Alan said something which triggered. Last council meeting, we had a forty five minute presentation, our housing needs of which the majority of it. Well, housing. Very first thing that was presented after that, the property tax increase. Yes, I'm perplexed by that. I don't understand the math maybe. So that doesn't. Me, leave it at that for.
Whether council has anything further. Just for the benefit of the public in particular, because I imagine you are interested in my position on it as well. Council is aware that I do support the one percent. As the motion was made, I do appreciate the comments about affordability. I would encourage us in the coming year, look at ways. Who actually work with our when our tax structure. Who have less of an impact on those who's needy while not. Denying the the wealth in our community that is. Smooth, so would be my comment. With that. To vote. Motion before you is to approve AB twenty two dash one three five. An ordinance adopting me twenty three property tax levy. Option number two with one percent increase. Set set forth as a first and final reading. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed.
Aye.
Have that correctly, I have the motion passes with members got help and Rosen acting. Thank you. Thank you, council. We'll move on. Next item on our agenda this evening is. AB twenty two dash one three six, which is also a public hearing ordinance adopting the twenty twenty. Three twenty twenty four annual budget. Gold, you.
Just have a couple of comments, so questions that were asked last time. Our comments made from the public, one was on what is a modification, and one of the citizens asked. And since we do, we pass a biennial budget, there is a second year, which would be. Eight and twenty three for two thousand twenty four, city has the option to amend. Needs to make changes and it's called a mid biennial modification. That hopefully that verifies that. Citizen and then. There was a question also about the water fund, and so that was an early number that that one citizen looked at. Actually is much higher than that because this is also, I remember we did a. Interfund loan earlier this year for the water, one point two million dollars. The fund is projected to be at about one point. One point two million five. So actually one fifty thousand, sorry, and. Our concerns as staff and the mayor, yes, water fund. Being challenged now because of inflation, so materials and labor costs are going up exponentially right now. Station's around eight to nine and objected by the experts to go down and. Or build the budget to be a little. Or conservative, so we're not. Low as as those projections are, but right now the increases are outstripping rating. Rate increases five point five over the next years each year, and right now with inflation that will not. We're watching it really closely. Fund has had a lot of activity and. There's going to be a little bit of a slowdown during the next two years and that. And we're going to see as inflation comes down how we rebuild the reserves of the. That it's available. That's the one, because that was a good question brought by the public, but we also, I believe we did speak with people about this. So it's not a surprise, it's just something that's natural. That's all I have. Oh, there one other thing too. I have been speaking with the consultant who did the great study for the city and we're looking at. As based on the economic.
Counsel, any verifying questions move the hearing?
Just to be clear for tonight's action, the the final action on approving the the budget will be at our next council meeting on December sixth. This will go through finance committee one more time. I just want to clarify.
The committee. Yes, tonight is intended to be first reading only. It will in your. Sixth meeting. To Rosen.
Richard, you mentioned some of the funds with the capital spending of inflation of some pretty big hits. Our REIT fund is still in decent shape. This is a question I don't know the answer and I'm asking. Apple projects are allowed, the REIT monies are allowed to be spent on capital projects. And including into the sewer, the water, et cetera. We looked at maybe moving some more of that REIT over something to help alleviate some of the pressure on those. Can we do that?
Well, and and the attorney can help me out with this. I really believe for REIT, you have to be careful. Close to that, you've opened it up a little more, as I understand, but a lot of that is for municipal roads. Not seeing too much of that transferred to abilities. That's why there was an interfund loan done on an interfund. So while it's available, I would hesitate to say that simply because enterprise funds need to. They need to be aware of that, we transfer.
That was a question, as I said, I didn't know, so. Thank you.
Mr. Rosen. One else. Then we will open the public hearing at eight oh six. You remember the public here at city hall or attending with us online. Wish to speak on this budget item. Please indicate in the chat. Star nine are online. You're here in city chambers, we'll start here, you start moving toward the podium. And we will start with name and address for the record and you'll have up to three minutes. Carefully at the audience, everyone's avoiding my eyes again. See no one moving forward. Do we have anyone online?
We do. Michael Thomas would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Gold for the introduction, Michael Thomas, twelve thirty one La Forest Drive SE. And again, thank you, Mr. Gold, for addressing my questions on the previous meeting. I was the one who had the questions around the. Low values and the first estimate given on November first on the what was left in the twenty twenty four budget. And thank you for clarifying the the one point two million dollar inter REIT. Transfer loan, which I believe was authorized on April fifteenth of this year. I still am concerned by, I didn't see much change between the November first and November fifteenth drafts in terms of revenues and expenditures. And the water funds, so that was, I still think additional work may be needed there. Plus your additional commentary about inflationary pressures raising the costs, you know, on the. On the plane don't appear to be reflected in expenditures. The other thing in reflect reflecting the REIT loan. Was the purpose of that was to cover GFC shortfalls from twenty two twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five. I didn't see any substantial revenues and I find it shocking that no GFCs would be. Gathered between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, and certainly there are some larger development projects. I I would suspect they would be hooked up, but maybe not. So I would hope that folks would look a little more into detail as to. What's left in the in the water fund, particularly four oh one, and I as my understanding is the REIT loans have to be paid back. As water is an independent enterprise utility. Thank you very much, and this concludes my comment. And again, apology for the choppy speech. I'm getting tremendous feedback from the room. Thank you.
One else.
No one else.
Council, this is a reminder, we did hold a hearing on the budget. Previous council meeting, so this is actually our second hearing on the budget. The choice, of course, we could continue or have a third. Public hearing at the next budget meeting, but would suggest that we close it, so unless there is objection. We'll close the public hearing at eight ten. We'll close the public hearing at 8:10. Very much in that, it's us for getting action on the budget. This came through F and A, of course, so Mr. Elwood, introduce a motion to get us started.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve the 2023, 2024 biannual budget as a first.
Second. Motion is second. And that motion is a little bit different than the way it read in your packet. We've got that up from that, so was more used to seeing. Sir, I would grow a motion.
Not really much more to add, Your Honor. Appreciate the truncating of the original motion, made it a lot, a lot easier. So I think to add, unless my colleagues do.
Mr. Jocelyn.
Budgets are boring. You know.
Good recovery.
But yes, not the message or the messenger. But budgets, at the end of the day, a budget is the most definitive and clear expression of the cities' priorities that a city sets in all of its actions ever. Now, setting a budget is right there, the black and white. It is the clearest expression of our priorities of any other action that we may take. Therefore, it's fundamentally important. It's at the top of the list of what we're responsible for doing. Here we are in the middle of this process that's been led out for us. We're moving down that path. I'm supportive. I, you know, the mayor spoke to the significant increases in public health, mental health, social service funding in this budget, which makes me proud to be here and, and happy that this city has those sorts of resources, is making those sort of choices and deciding, you know, at least, you know, those priorities. I'm pleased to be part of that. I will be supporting resolution. Thank you.
So. Got help? Mr. Rosen. Appreciate the comments, even the ones that are at my expense. You also believe that it's earned incredibly. We're looking at it very well, and I want to man so long the word. Short time this year. The, this new biennium, and should be mindful as Mr. Rosen spoke to regard to the sessions that were spent discussing human services, discussing special projects that were able to date within the budget. I think it's, I think it's forward. We're doing good work. With that. Nice motion is to approve me, me three, 2024 annual budget as a first reading. On favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? Since unanimously, moving along. Next item here. Item number 10, AB 22-137. This is an ordinance amending the taxes, rates and fees schedule regarding solid waste and recycling. Mr. Miller.
It's Mr. Mayor and council members from the boring to the mundane. This is something that you do every year and it's reflective of your agreement with our solid waste carrier, public services. According to that contract, they are to review the service costs each year. Take a look at the tipping fee that they're charged by the county, which we can almost, almost count on to go up. And also look at what the CPI is and reflect those charges in the revised rates, which you have in the ordinance that's attached to the AB. So in accordance with that contract, we're recommending approval of AB 22137 to reflect the rates that are shown in the ordinance in your packet. Yeah, we'd answer any question.
Verifying questions? CPI, I understand with that being in the contract, my memory of, well, tipping fees are automatically included or is that our discretion?
They are automatically included. You'll recall that earlier this year, we were asked to make some revisions to these fees, and we do not do that. We are, we'll only do it according to the contract. Once a year, it will usually come to you in November. This is entirely consistent with the languages. We've had legal review.
Thank you.
Yeah. One else? There's anyone from the public wishes to speak on this item? Just move to the podium or if you are online, indicate in the chat box or by star nine. Start here with those in chambers, up to three minutes to speak. Bring with your name and address for the record. Seeing everyone in chambers avoiding eye contact. Online.
No one at this time.
This would be another F and A item. Mr. Elwood, did you want to defer?
Motion to approve AB 22137, an ordinance increasing the solid waste and recycling rates and amending the tax rates and fee schedules as a first and final reading.
Motion of a second. A second. Sir, would anything down?
Think Mr. Miller summarized it quite well. Like increases for the game. So I, you have some questions, so I'll, I'll reserve that for this time, but that's all I'll say on this.
Ron Beck, anything down?
This process is something that we fortunately have to do on a regular basis and our friends who control the tip fees at the next level up of government have some spirited discussions about how they were going to. And I'm sure when our friends from, the chance to speak tonight, they might reflect, you know, potential impacts that that has on their cost of service. And moving forward, there are some significant challenges with the facilities that these tip fees are employed at. And we're seeing the tip of the iceberg. Costs are going up. Us, everything associated, solid waste are going up. And there are new rules and regulations coming down from ecology, other folks, which are going to impact those facilities as well. So we're at the bottom of the food chain here coming, but I would be supportive of obviously adopting this tonight and forth.
So anyone else? None. The motion before you is to approve AB 22-137, an ordinance increasing solid waste and recycling rates, amending access rates and fee schedule. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? She carries it is unanimous. Item on our agenda. Is number 11, AB 22-138. This is a motion authorizing a solid waste collection contract. This is different. This is for the future. Leave Mr. Marshinko is going to presentation and an insight. See lights going dim. See him at the podium. He didn't get a grant for lighting. That was the problem. Should be appearing on the screen as well as behind. Seeing the same. The sound is stereo. From your capital projects and grants manager and introductions behind me, we have our epicenter services is the consultant we hired to assist with this contract. And we have Jeff Brown behind me and then Jeanette Jurgensen as well. We also have in the room, the two out of three of the proposers, proposals that through ecology and republic. So this is the 2024, 2034 solid waste collection contract and your contract. The city will be updating council and running through this direction needed. We are looking for counsel to accept staff recommendations and move forward with the 10-year contract. Staff is also requesting the current administration fee is 7.5 added to this contract. And then we're asking for it to be increased 2.5% and 10%. City conducted competitive procurement as we went through this process. You had a current 11-year contract from 2011, which actually Jeff Brown was here with you guys at the center at time. And right now you had between Republic Services, Recology and Waste Management, three good quality contractors. Also then, we had quantitative and qualitative analysis with internal city staff, myself, Lisa Marshall, our city attorney, and Tom Moore. Evaluation scoring in front of you, just showing the numbers of what we looked at and evaluated, worked with epicenter to get this accomplished. And then the republic qualitative highlights that we highlighted for you are the six items. And the new contract, just to highlight electric support vehicles. We looking out at the future, so they're going to have the support vehicles are electric, unlimited commercial recycling. And also with the variable CPI that seems to be jumping all over the place these days, we tapped it at a 5%. And we thought that'd make it easier for us and looking at budgets. Service disruption. Elephant in the room, we worked it out and put it in the new contract and this will not, you know, completely eliminate, it will definitely help and reduce. Hopefully this will not be an issue, but I do want to let counsel know, public's been here for 40 plus years. That's outstanding. They know this community, they're embedded in the community and their drivers know everybody, they know the routes and they really do a good job. So kudos to them as they made it through, you know, 40 plus years and hopefully continue another 10. Great impacts. As council member Loudonback has stated, prices are going up. They went across, every city has seen them unfortunately, and we evaluated, looked at them. Republic did come in with the lowest proposal and had a couple citing things we're going to share with you on the slides coming up. I'm going to have Jeanette step up and cover a little bit of this, but if you concentrate looking at the middle column, current contract, 2023 rates, you'll see, just trying to give you some examples, but again, I'll.
Thank you. And as you see in the first column, those rates that was in by Republic in the press, these rates will be adjusted by both CPI inflation and disposal increase prior to implementation in Gillette, 2024. So you can't, you didn't want to step through and be wrong. So just so you know, this is not what we're going to see will be in. And we prove that. And then as you heard earlier, on the King County disposal increase that affects the rates every year, King County is adding a fixed annual charge to their new fee. We are working internally on the mechanism of what that's going to look like, that new fee is not allowed in the contract at this time. We will be back in front of council in spring or summer next year, amendments for both current and the future.
Yeah. This deserved a slide on its own. This is really, public putting their proposal for the 10-year contract, $10,000. Like I said, they're embedded in the community. You're going to put that into the downtown foundation is really, really good. And then the, what we had experienced this past year, I made a proposal to Rich Reinhardt who's here, he's the general manager with Republic behind me. And needless to say, I, I put out there the $40,000 for, he said, we went through working with the attorney's office internally and what we endured working with the public and trying to provide a service. He didn't even hesitate, did not even hesitate. He said, how about, you know, he, he went back to his, his bosses and said, hey, Dan, you know, is there a way, we're at the end of 2022, there a way we can work with you and maybe do the 10,000 in '22 and then 30,000 in '23? Absolutely. You know, just working with us, I think that's phenomenal. Working with the downtown foundation and working on the 10-year contract, 10,000 every year from the first 24 moving forward all the way through 34. So I did put that together, notify, let council be aware, this is coming through. And then recommendation staff is to approve the 10-year contract. Everything you see, you know, or have looked at and reviewed, we're here and we can answer questions. Did want to introduce Rich Reinhardt and he's general manager. Or we take questions from council, I thought, let him say.
Reeve? Yes. Evening, Rich Reinhardt, 1605 Southeast 144th, Renton, Washington. That meant Dan mentioned, I'm the rear manager for public services. As Dan Matt Hall's mentioned, we've been a proud, proud partner with our Ben's last. My team and myself are very excited to keep that partnership for another 10. As we know, electric vehicles are the future. Look as a leader in that space above, what we're doing right now, we, we have 10 on route. Very near future, we intend to bring electric vehicles to the city in the Puget Sound area up north. Once again, for years, we appreciate that. As I said, we'd be honored to keep that on for another 10 years.
And Rich is not going to tell you this, I will. Man was out here last winter slinging garbage with us. So just general managers, you don't usually see that. Really did an outstanding job. He won't talk about. At that point, we will take the, any questions you guys have. Contact.
I have a question. So the month we went without garbage in December, a lot of it was weather related, which is understandable. I totally get it. And the final week, which was not weather related, but related to a strike in San Diego, whatever. So the city picked, helped get rid of trash for those citizens, which the city paid for. But why should the citizens have to pay for a month of no trash service? Like if I buy a hamburger and you don't give me the hamburger, have to buy a hamburger?
What I can say to that and possibly might be able to help, I know Lisa did a lot of the work, legally, we followed the contract as did Republic. So we went through, we followed the contract itself and, and all parameters were met. So once you open that door, it's, you know, many more doors. We did everything we could, coordinated, worked with Republic, righted, as you're aware. And we had staff, it was a partnership between them and us and did the best we could under the circumstances, the weather and you stated the union strike. Mr. Rosen.
So we'll follow up on that. Our contract, it didn't allow for anything. We're now we're entering into a new contract and I don't see that being addressed moving forward. Seems. into a new contract and I don't see that being addressed moving forward. Seems like if I read it correctly, it's same process. There is, you will be charged again if we go for a full month without service. Why aren't we addressing this with the language in there to give some sort of relief? Oh, another month or two weeks or three weeks. Don't see it in here. Missing it?
Yeah, we are, we are addressing it and we, we made some modifications to the current contract.
Those, those changes, like your hopes that you can get out here the next day or the next week. What I'm talking about is following up on when Heather was talking. If you miss another month of service, to say in the new contract, will our customers get relief from their bills?
Uh, the way the contract's written, it does not leave. One of the alternatives that we looked at when we went out to proposal was to provide financial relief as well as recovery process. And when staff looked at those costs, they were too high to really consider. It was still more than we thought, something like that. One of the other things that is addressed are there are performance fees that have been added to address both inclement weather and labor disruptions since past contract. And so hoping that will provide more of a financial incentive to make sure we get this recovery options. And so either we can pick, if possible, and then also have the drop off.
Mr. Rosen.
Uh, yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the detailed and thoroughness of it. Um, I do have a more of a kind of order that I'd like some clarification on. I know we're going to be moving to approve this contract or not tonight. And verification I'd like to have is sending this back to finance committee so that we as a council can spend a little bit more time on it. I went through TPW, which makes sense, but there are some financial implications here. Just reading the room here, there should be a little bit more so on this contract. Is that something that I should wait till introduce the motion or should I proceed, sir?
Hanging up too much on technical procedure is not usually a successful meeting. So that, that admonition, if you will, that suggests getting a motion on the floor, then move, 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 move this matter to the idiot.
Again, thank you for the presentation. There, there's a lot here to consider. Appreciate the time that you.
Thank you.
Clarifying questions. Well, I, so clarifying question, the minimum level of service that people cannot get out of, and I understand that's by city statute, but is that, it's not called out in the contract as to what that is. I'm assuming that's a 20 gallon.
Yes, it would be the minimum service level.
Which is that 20 gallon content.
The other clarifying question.
One more. The wildlife resistant fee of $3.30, is that per month? That's not called out specifically in the contract.
Yes, that's a monthly. And I was careful. Through questions and so, and we'll move. Right. You are a member of the public and wish to speak on this end item. Please move towards the podium. You are online, indicating at box or by star nine. We will start as we have been here in council chambers. We'll start with name and address for the record, then you'll have a few minutes.
Thank you. Logan Harvey, 611 South State Street, Washington. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Logan Harvey. I'm the government relations sustainability manager for Recology King County. Nice decision is a really important one. About establishing a 10 year relationship with a partner who will be charged for performing a critical function in your city. The residents and the businesses of North Bend. Such a long timeline. It's really important to deeply consider this partnership and who will best serve the city's residents and businesses. This will affect the quality of life here. This will affect the appearance of the city and, um, will hub drive the city's vision for the future. I understand that your incumbent holler has, uh, has the cheapest perspective. Are they truly the best partner? All haulers in King County face real challenges during the snow event. For our part, Recology made sure our citizens were informed with daily updates on the website, joining local social media groups to share information, directly calling our customers and texting them as well. We went beyond the language in our contract, putting out inclement, inclement weather drop boxes a week early and manning these stations with our own staff, not requiring city staff to come out there and help ensure that they were not at risk. In the recovery, we prioritized garbage and recycling services over yard waste. And so we got the city cleaned up quickly, but we had residents in one of our cities that felt that their yard waste took a little bit too long to collect. So again, we went beyond the contract and refunded these citizens for hardship that they had to bear waiting for their material to be collected, the tune of over $20,000. Contrasts with North Bend's experience, where your haulers' communication issues left citizens unaware of where drop boxes would be located, unsure if service would be coming. Eventually taxpayers were stuck with over $40,000 expenses that really were the hauler's responsibility. These expenses were because they don't service on weekends. It was your responsibility. I understand that there's a feeling that some of these cost recoveries, some of this, there's some cost recovery for this through the donations to the downtown association. Cleared, these donations are incumbent, signing a new contract with the holler. They're, they're contingent on that and giving them a significant pay increase. And there are amounts that would typically be donated by a holler to nonprofits in any city that would support, same way that we do in the cities that we work in. But that's the past. Let's talk about the future. North Bend is a city that cares about its environment, seeks to improve its waste diversion. Contract with Recology drives those values. Recology contract includes a waste service specialist focused on the city of North Bend that will meet with your businesses, teach them how to divert food waste and provide six weeks, six months of free food waste service. Try to reduce their.
All right, Logan, you're on.
Oh, I'm too slow. Yeah, shit it.
Yeah. Else here in chambers.
Lucas Haynes, uh, 43525 Southeast 76th Street, Washington, Mayor, Council, and colleagues. Uh, I'm here to represent the North Bend Downtown Foundation, speak about the sense of community with donations towards, uh, the downtown foundation. Over this process, they've really leaned in and gotten to know myself and the board, really gotten to understand what we want to achieve over the next couple of years and built this proposal in there. Help us grow towards reaching Main Street accreditation the next year and enriching our community. The donations this year will directly go to the holiday lighting and the donations going further further the next years will be directly presented in the downtown corridor. So I'm here on behalf of the downtown foundation.
Evening, Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Wendy Wyker, 4808 East Mercer Way, Sir Island, Washington. Um, I had some remarks, but I'm not going to use those. I'm just going to say, uh, you've been in your community for over 40 years. The record's back further than our digital file. We love this town. Our drivers love this town. I got in this town about a year ago after my colleague Russell Joe. I stepped in and kept doing the community engagement we've been doing for years and you're beautiful. I got to know your North Bend Downtown Foundation. I got to know your Chamber of Commerce. I've been here daily, monthly, endlessly, trying to figure out how to best serve this community above and beyond the daily work we do every day. I know the storm event was frustrating. We work closely with your staff. We're going to work closely going forward to you about which roads to clear, how best to clear them, but public safety is our number one priority. If the streets aren't safe, buses can't get through, your Amazon drivers can't, school buses can't get through, our drivers can't get through. Public safety is our number one priority. After that, it's economic development and sustaining our communities. We invest in this town, live and work in this town, and we are committed to making sure that we keep that going forward in the future. You know, this quality of life is important to you and your residents. You're committed to being here. We did above and beyond. We've always gone above and beyond. We do the drop boxes, show up on weekends, we show up for those special events, communicate endlessly and always with your staff and your residents and your businesses in good times and bad. We are here to serve where your is in this work. We're looking forward to being there going forward. Uh, I, I think going forward to you, I, I understand there's some math that you're concerned about. All the proposals were good. You had three good qualified proposals come through. You talked about the alternatives. Your town is committed to sustainability. You're also committed to financial responsibility and fiscal. We were $600,000 less expensive than the previous. That's because we have the economies of scale. We know how to do this work, doing this work, this work. We have a lot more work to do going forward with King County and all the work coming forward. Organic diversion with, uh, House 1799, an increased recycling going forward. King County is going to work, all of us, on how to their zero waste pools and reap work. I'm on the chair of the King County Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I have a front row seat, work with your staff in our regional cities to help gather at us through all the changes that are coming in this expensive essential service. So I encourage you to take a look at the math. I think you all have it there. Um, we're your good economical, sustainable partner in this work. We are committed to network and forward. Appreciate the town. We love working with your staff, GLH outreach and some businesses. We're here and we're committed to serve. Encourage you to think about that. Um, it's only going to get more expensive if we build in those rates. I guarantee you, we work staff. Whenever there's an emergency, whenever there's a block, we will do that.
And now, sir, in chamber. Do we have anyone on?
So we do. Michael Thomas would like to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Michael Thomas, 1231 Forest Drive, SE. Uh, I want to echo, uh, two council people's comments about the concerns of the service we had this winter. Some of us did not get garbage pickup for a full month. Uh, while some of that may be force majeure, such as weather, failure to monitor your worker conditions is your responsibility as a provider. I am unhappy with the handling of that. We were not communicated, uh, failure to pick up on two consecutive weeks in my neighborhood. And I personally would like to see that we get refunds for this in the future and also some credit even for inclement weather events. I don't feel that it's appropriate for performance fees to go to the city coffers. Uh, this needs to go back to people who suffered expenses, brought their garbage in and of course also to also reimburse the city. So I am not happy that there is, this is not in the contract and I'm not happy with the representation of the presenter that this has been addressed. If you're saying it's addressed by performance fees, that's not an appropriate solution. I'm also concerned by the raising of the administrative fee to 10%. No doubt this is the cost of doing business that's passed on to us as customers. I would suggest you roll it back to 7.5%. And I also see a 50% increase, uh, in 2024 over what we're paying today in $20, $22 plus additional stacking of King County fees. So I would hope that council would look to reduce the administrative fee back to 7.5%. If we're serious about holding down utility costs and cost of living here, then we won't do a 10% administrative fee and we'll take it down to 7.5% and reduce the contract by that amount. Thank you very much. This concludes my comment.
Anyone else?
No one else.
Good public comment. Mr. Loudonback, through your committee?
Yes, it did. Motion to approve AB 22-138 authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute comprehensive garbage recyclables and compostables collection services contract with Republic Services the period of April 1, 2024 through March 30, 34, to increase the city administrative fee 10% effective 1.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion in a second. Mr. Loudonback, speak to the committee.
Yeah, the presentation that we were made aware of and the extensive work by the committee and Mr. Mursinko, uh, there was a competitive bid process. Uh, there were a lot of, uh, time and effort put into this contract. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, uh, dollars are not in close, uh, which isn't necessarily, um, isn't necessarily the only determining factor, but, uh, when you have incumbent contractors, they have certain advantages. They have staffing, they have equipment, they have the ability and the resources to address the current need. Those who come in as non-incumbents are at a disadvantage, unfortunately, especially in this environment where you have a shortage of CDL drivers, people who can operate the trucks come in. You have to, uh, create your, your fleet and capacity to be able to take on new business, which isn't necessarily a dis, you know, uh, something that disqualifies. It's certainly one thing that adds to the discrepancy in the, in the, uh, buildings that we saw. As far as, um, costs being increased, uh, moving forward, uh, many of those costs are pass-throughs from other administrative agencies. Anybody who would be a successful bidder on a contract will be imposing those costs and fee. Uh, it was also explained, uh, committee and then again here this evening that, yes, you could buy the insurance to have compensation for people in, uh, catastrophic offense that don't have their garbage picked up on a timely basis. But the upfront fees and, uh, in insurance that you pay in the base rate of the contract, uh, be somewhat onerous in and of themselves. So I think, uh, given, uh, the competitive nature of the bid, everybody put their best foot forward, had three excellent contractors bid. I believe the committee came through with a reasonable choice and I would recommend to do.
I believe you were the second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you said that eloquently, Ross. So I really don't have anything to add because you said everything pretty much I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Do you want a motion, Mr. Olliver, or do you want to?
Comment first. Okay. So if your motion passes, you'll get some information.
I'm sorry. Mr. Rosen, did you ask?
I, I did. Um, I think this is our opportunity. I know last year was very frustrating. It's council and most folks in the town go through lack of service for a month. Now, I understand completely about the roads. We're. I cannot blame, will not blame. Even understand the labor issue. But it was incredibly inconvenient to our resident. Then it felt like it was just an insult to injury when we got a bill in the mail for a month of no service. And understood at the time, there's nothing we can do. That was in our contract. That was what we had signed. The opportunity to address that is now because we do have a new contract. Unless we want to see that again, we're comfortable with that. We do need to address it. And so there may be a cost, but I think that is something we can negotiate and talk about. I'd like to see us negotiate and talk about. Um, I also have CERN with notable cost increase, then us adding two and a half percent or seven and a half percent, bringing that up to 10%. I do not understand why we need to do that. I see our cost for everything going up. Urgent on our residents continues to increase. This is a bill that substantially increased and I understand why. It's costs are going up all around the country. For us to then take an extra two and a half percent on top of that, um, I. Well, then I hope if you do go back to finance, you can take some of that around.
Mr. Rosen. Uh, hell.
I understand the costs and, and. I understand the costs and, and the increases. I have a concern that we as a council has not reviewed this early enough. The information that I saw here, there might have been more committee level. I would love to see it come back, and so we can understand why TPW recommended this moving forward. I would reject it. May have looked at it. I would like an opportunity to look at.
I would like to add to the communication aspect of Rabenko, because I do understand the snow, that I would never want those out there trying to pick up trash in a snowstorm. But it was the weeks after that, and the communication was lacking. Nobody knew where to go. My neighbor and I self put up signs at the end of our street, no to go to Torgason. That should not have been on us. Should not have been on the city. Should have been on Rabenko. So I am.
I thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, we're, we're dealing with folks who have proven their ability to stick us with the letter of the, what's written in the contract. Clearly, we're going to be held to. If nothing else, that's the one thing that's been proven in all of this. What's written, they're going to honor. And the city honored it, and Rabenko honored it, and nobody was happy about it, certainly those that was living here. We ended up with a pretty short end of the stick. And if I'm not wrong, during presentation and these sort of debrief, I believe it was some, if somebody got compensated, somebody didn't have to pay their bill, somebody has a contract written in a way such that, that exactly, or something very similar happened, and the outcomes are very different in terms of what it cost those who are receiving service. Sympathetic to the weather. I am not sympathetic to, you know, huge corporation who CEO makes unconscionably large amounts of money and is squibbling over a few dollars compensations for workers in San Diego, subsequently costing what it costs the city and the people who live here. And their absolute unwillingness to in any way budget or address it, then to say that's what's written down, and then come in here and say that, oh, we're, we support your community, and we're all friends, and how can we work together? I can tell you how you can work together, and you choose not to take that path, but I really didn't want to revisit the future. I mean, the past, I'm more interested in the future, and I do have some real concerns about this. I appreciate, for example, there's a commitment to equity and diversity in staffing stated. It's on a slide. If I search for diversity in the contract, the only place it comes up is in legal language. There's no commitment in there. There's no metric that they can be held to. There's no measure. I can say I'm committed to the diversity in hiring. I don't see a single word in that contract that holds anybody to anything, if that's true. And I've, and I'm interested in that. Appreciate the commitment. I just want to know that it's true. Want somebody to look back and say, oh, look, or I want to look at the front end of it and say, oh, look, I went to this and say, you didn't come through on the commitment. You wrote it down, the power, and similar, you know, metrics on education and outreach. There's emphasis on contamination reduction program, which is really, really important. We as a city really compare. I mean, climate is impacting all of us, and it's not cheap, and it costs money, and we can't keep skating by on the low end of what it's going to cost. And then the minimum in this contract, I want to make sure people who live here are getting the help they need to make sure that they're making the best choices possible with their garbage, such that its impact is minimized. We have a role in that, which gets me back to my broader point of I will support giving this more consideration before committees. I want to consider, I want to know that downstream impacts. What's going on? What's the difference in these contracts? Once the garbage is hauled away from my street, what's going to happen to it? That's a concern to me, and I haven't had the time. It wasn't on TPW. I would like to know that that's been considered and evaluated, and how that was balanced in this proposal that's come before us tonight, because this is a 10-year contract. What are the rates going to be 10 years from now? We can't begin to imagine, but also imagine what the impact's going to be, you know, really uncertain, folks. So it's a long-term contract. I have some questions about it. I think it's really important, and I think, no, there is a moment here, an inflection point to make a choice that isn't just the bottom line cheapest. I want to know what's defensible on a broader sense of principles that this city says that it, you know, represents and stands for, and some of those are environmental sustainability. That's not even mentioned, referred, waived at in here, here as I can tell. Not a word. I've had nothing. Just what's cheapest. These are the folks, they've done well. Sure, they've done well. Unless I'm missing it. Oh, those are questions, and I would like the opportunity to further evaluate them going forward. Thank you.
Elwood, I know you have a motion to make. I just want to be sure with council that you're, whether you want to have staff answering any of the questions, or it's like protecting a theme.
I have a few sentences, but a lot of what is going on is, I even said, I mean, I put it in the bin. Now where does it go? And I know a few years ago, I think, somebody, your colleague came and gave us a great presentation about where it goes. And one of the challenges that he raised back at that time was especially on the recycling front, kind of refusing or taking all of our recycled matter. Where is it going now? I pay for yard waste, garbage, and recycle bin. Is that, and I go to other states and there's one bin, right? They're like, what do you mean you recycle? Who does that now? Well, I live in Washington and we recycle. But there are some of those questions that I would like to hear more about. Me as a council member to enter into a 10-year contract, and, and I appreciate the tenure that we've had, the relationship that we had. There was a lot of great eloquent words spoken about beauty of, of the business relationship. That beauty of a business relationship fails in a moment of need, where one business, Mr. Jocelyn articulated, really lend a hand to the smaller benefactors or the smaller relationship, all our members of that business relationship, such as the city of North Bend. So, so to me, that was an epic fail. Now, I understand costs are important. You say $600,000 or something on there was savings. So those do add into the value, but I want to know where it goes now. I need a little bit more information. I think 10-year contract is steep. There are some incremental costs that we have to weigh out, and I do want this to go to a finance committee to at least give committee itself some more time to think about this holistically, as well as my colleagues to think about this a little bit more thoroughly. So with that, unless there's other comments, I move to postpone this matter until a finance and administration committee has had time to review it.
Motion and a second to speak. Secondary motion handled first. Mary motion. So in the, this motion would be delaying the secondary motion. Have the magic go and analyze quite as quickly as you read it, said, back to you, Mr. Elwood, you have a motion essentially to send this to the finance and administration committee. Would like to ask, lawyer, we need any additional information in that motion as to when it might, if the motion as made is sufficient?
It's, it is sufficient as made. I think it would be helpful to the entire body if there was a little more detail as to when it, when it goes to FNA and when it comes back once and expect back.
And I understand that may not be something you're able to do at this. So.
Appreciate that. Would, would the detail come in the tail end of the motion, which is, and then it will be determined when it will come back to this body from the FNA committee? Or do you need a date?
I think it's important to at least establish the FNA date, and then FNA would determine when it comes.
First December meeting? December 6 is our next meeting. I just, it's on the agenda.
Think your FNA.
And that's going, I think we're going to be discussing the. Yep. The budget. That's why December 6 FNA is a big one. So what, when is the drop dead date of decision-making on this?
It goes, the sooner the better.
Wait, I'm being asked for a specific date?
Yeah.
Come on now.
It doesn't, it doesn't work, Mr. Regus.
I think your first FNA committee is the first, I believe it would be first Tuesday in January, then. So that's January 3.
So, uh, restate my motion. Let me write this down.
Check.
I amend my motion. Looking for the proper procedure here. Okay. I amend my motion. Be such that move that we postpone this matter until it has been reviewed at the finance administration committee meeting on January 3, 2023.
Any further comment?
No, I do appreciate the effort. Everybody doing this really come down to, I think that there's needs to be more eyes to take a look at this than what was looked. I apologize. I didn't get any time to look at it priorly. So appreciate the additional time. I noted whatever budget you guys have, but it is important for us as a community to make sure we look it over, and it's something.
Mr. Elwood, listen carefully. The motion, as I heard you make it, Mr. Remand, AB 22-138, to the finance and administration committee meeting, January.
Works.
Scott Health?
Works.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to two with council members Lounback and Miller objecting. And with that, that immediately negates the prior motion. Knights consideration. Council? Working our way down our list here, brings us to item number 12, AB 22-139, resolution authorizing development agreement with Telegraph Properties OLC. Sperell.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I will provide a brief summary of the Bakes Marine Boat and Watercraft Sales Project, and the owner, Bill Baker, is here as well, if there are questions for him. So the property is located along southeast North Bend Way. It's just east of the Mountside Pub on a 1.7 acre parcel that is vacant. The property is zoned neighborhood business NB, and the use boat and watercraft sales is an allowed use. So they are proposing a one-story building, 29,000 square feet. It has a showroom, office based with mezzanine, and a storage area for approximately 50 to 75 boats. So they would have a variety of uses there, canvas manufacturing, like I said, some sales, some parts, and storage. Everything would be indoors. So the commercial uses in the, in the neighborhood business zone have a height limit of 35 feet, maximum front setback of 15 feet, and a 20-foot minimum rear setback. So we have reviewed this project. One full round of review has been completed. They submitted a complete application, and we're awaiting a resubmital from them. This project is reviewed administratively, and there will be one more round of public comment during the SEPA determination when that's issued, 15 days for that comment period. Project is in the Salau Water Area, and they do have an existing meter on site, which will serve them. So they have asked for a development agreement, which would enable them to have the building the size they need for their business operations. Currently, the code under our design standards limits the ground floor commercial tenant space to 15,000 square feet. The intent of this code was to limit big box retail and also to scale buildings appropriately. Development would be required to meet all other bulk and dimensional and density requirements, and will continue design review throughout the building permit phase. Of note is that the zoning just to the east of this parcel, abutting it, is an employment park two, which does not limit the ground floor commercial space. So if they were one parcel over, they would be able to do this without coming in front of you all for a development agreement. AIX is also requesting a deviation from parking lot landscaping requirements in regards to landscape islands and instead consolidating those and design standards to position the building a little bit further back from the street in the build two line, and they're proposing to create a flagpole and a, the building is set skewed, you can see on the site plan. Both the parking lot and the landscaping deviations can be approved administratively, but, but are included in the development agreement in order to provide a full record of the requested approvals that they've asked for deviations for. During the notice of application period, we received one email of support for the project and one letter that had a series of questions, and that person also came to the planning commission public hearing and asked those in person. The applicant has provided an economic model, which estimates 12 employees will work at this location with first year sales forecasted at 5 million. Development does provide an opportunity for new retail use within existing underperforming commercial site, a vacant site. North Bend would likely receive in the range of 57,000 per year based on tax revenue from the development. And impact fee estimate is currently at around 240,000. That would be finalized with their permits. The planning commission recommended approval at their October 13 meeting with a modification to the site plan to support removal of a five-foot landscape strip along the east side of the parcel. There's a building that's actually larger in size than, than the one being proposed, and it sits really close to the property line. And so instead of putting five feet of landscaping next to a drive aisle, they said, let's focus that on the west side where we have also neighborhood business zoning, but it has an overlay for residential being allowed, and that's primarily what exists on that side. So that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions or have Mr. Baker speak, if you'd like.
So clarifying questions only at this time.
On page 163, says approximately $57,000. Throughout a number of very different.
Yeah, they, and Mr. Baker caught that as well. So their forecasted sales are 5 million. The city estimates we would receive in tax revenue 57,000. Page, did you see that error?
163.
Are you confirming as a type?
reported as it's a net sales per year resulting in, it's just the way it ended up getting written, reported, or it's.
Right.
Isn't it, didn't get answered?
Yeah, I, H175 has it there.
Anyone else?
Yes. And the artist rendering, what is white building next to it? That is a, I can't remember the name of it. They make slug bait.
Freeze.
Or a slug bait. There's, there's another name for the business. They've been there a long time. Is it near, yes, we're just east of the Mountside Pub.
Now, clarifying. None? Comment? We're here, the audience. You would step to the podium or online, be blocked or by star nine. Three minutes, being with your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here in the audience who would speak? Cleared the place out pretty good with the last, Mr. Elwood amazingly cleared the group. No one here in chambers. Reed, do we have anyone online?
No one at this time. Michael Thomas would like to comment.
Michael Thomas would like to comment.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. I did have a clarifying question for staff in relation to water. Is there an existing meter on the property? Or is it a water certificate or a promise of water? Of course, the Salau Association is in a water moratorium, and my understanding of this is that really any incremental demand must be reviewed. So if it has an existing meter, that may require review for commitment of additional water. In the past, of course, there have been challenges even with use of conditional certificates. So I would have some concerns about water availability for the property, and I would ask council to defer action on this until the water can be verified for the property. This concludes my comment, thank you.
Your comment? Anyone else? One else online? And I believe this came through Community and Economic Development, Ms. Miller?
Mayor, it certainly did. Okay, motion to approve AB 22-19, resolution authorizing a developer agreement. Telegraph Properties, pardon me, LLC, Bates Marine Development.
Motion, and a second. Second, it's Miller, would you like to speak to?
The primary benefit to the city authorizing this through a development agreement is the tax revenue to the city, sales of the boats and the associated items. Bates Marine really fits our category of what we want to bring to North Bend, so I support it on that level. Also, the asset of enlarging that facility to over 29,000 per feet will house the boats. They will therefore not be exposed to elements outside looking at. That's something to consider as well.
Yes, I'm in strong support. It's very exciting, the design, the layout, and the fact that zoning is an approximate science. The fact that the adjacent parcel to the east is already zoned EP2 such that none of the prosa wouldn't need to come before us makes this really easy to say sure. And if you look at the diagram and the way it's laid out, I think it's a significant improvement, actually. Anyways, we're lucky to have it.
Thank you. I too support this. It's on brand, as also member Miller was articulating. This is one of those other moments where we've been trying really hard to work with businesses, commercial development, to be more of an open, friendly place where unique industries, unique businesses can come here, be part of our community, fit into our community. And I think offering this type of flexibility is a step in that right direction, leading by example, for example. So I do support this as well. Do have one question, and I hope that somebody would address the question that Mr. Thomas posed regarding water, so we could just clear the air on that right now, if we're able to do that.
You, staff?
Yes, we can let Mr. Baker comment as well. My understanding is they do have a meter out there, and I would think they would be pretty sure of their water situation to be spending this much money and going down this path as far. To add.
Um, there's water.
Please let us know for the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Bill Baker. 1223 segment, Mamish. The owner, there is a water meter there, it is working, use.
Mr. Rosen?
Appreciate this, I think this is fantastic. I agree, it's with what we want here. I would be remiss if I didn't at least bring up one concern, and Jamie, you can address it. I'm sure it has been talked about at committee level, I just haven't heard. Just want to make sure this is not going to just be primarily a boat storage facility. There's real sales going on and more than just storage. Concept sounds great, I just want to make sure the execution is seeing here.
Sure, so my understanding and talking with these folks over the last couple of years is a large portion of the big massing of the building will be 50 to 75 boats stored there. We've asked a number of times about point of sale, if there's boat sales, high-ticket items, it will be based out of North Bend. They'd like to be here, run their business out of here. The folks that do the canvas manufacturing, that also would happen here. And a big part of it, from what I understand, is the parts and sales, they sell worldwide. They manufacture certain things that nobody else does. Mr. Baker was explaining to us in CED Committee, and so they have a niche market, and they do a lot of, lot of sales that way.
Definitely both sales are. All right, thank you, this is a fantastic business to be bringing shit.
Rosen, Mr. Loudonback? You got? You had me at the introduction. Mr. Elwood, back to you.
Sorry, no, this is going on too long, but I just want, I just, I would just want clarification from Ms. Burrell that email sales, the online transactions, we get a portion of that tax revenue. See heads nodding?
I'm not 100% sure the tax structure, I believe we do get some, but I don't know what it is and if that changes in the future because that's not a city determination on.
Right.
All the taxes.
We're in a delivery.
Oh, you don't.
Delivery, so law changed several years ago, would be my, and I'm not, and I'm not the legal counsel here either, nor the tax expert. I'd be cautious about assuming that online sales would generate. Further. Right, the motion to approve AB 22-139, a resolution authorizing a developer agreement with Telegraph LLC, Bates Marine. Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, and it is unanimous, thank you much. Finally, on our agenda tonight, at least I believe it's finally here, number 13, AB 22-140. This is a motion authorizing a contract with Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust, Demming.
I'm going to make this quick. We've been working with Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust for many landscape and restoration projects over the many years, over many years. We usually bring individual contracts to you for each project, or sometimes they're under the amount that needs to come to council. However, we are looking at some new grants that are coming in and some other projects regarding tree mitigation and whatnot, and we expect to spend a little more this year than other years. And so we decided, instead of bringing each individual contract back to you, we are proposing to bring a single contract with a fixed amount over a two-year period and keep them on contract for these services moving forward. So our proposal is to have this contract for $300,000 for the two-year period, and it went to CED Committee on October 18th and recommended for approval. Thank you.
May have been the only one, said 600.
300, sorry.
Am I hearing? Clarifying questions? None? To the audience remaining and those online, if you have men on this agenda item, syndicate in the chat box or by star nine.
No one online?
Very much. I believe this also came through Community Economic Development, Ms. Miller?
Yes, it did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve AB 22-10, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust, an amount not to exceed $300,000, form and content acceptable to city attorney.
Do I have a second? Second? Second by Mr. Elwood, Ms. Miller, anything to add?
First and foremost, I think this is a sensational example of a partnership that really does work well. I think they've been working with us, Mountains to Sound Greenway, over 20 years, if that's the number I'm, I hope I'm accurate. If I'm not, I apologize. But I think this is a very efficient way to go forward, and I love efficiency personally, so I recommend everybody, local customers, to follow suit there.
Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, I concur. I mean, this is a relationship that we've had for a while and need to sustain. The key to this particular agenda bill is the efficiencies that Ms. Demming is bringing to the table to reduce staff time to coming back, coming back, and so forth. There still will be checks along the way for any money spent, if it's not to exceed. Though I do hope that this does pass tonight.
Mr. Loudonback?
Perhaps Mr. Miller or somebody on the staff can clarify, what is the limit for our small works roster? Other way?
Believe it's 35,000.
35,000, single trade, 60,000. We need to mend something to make this go forward? I hate to make you do lawyer stuff this time of night, mister. No, I'm just saying, I'm saying, are we exceeding the limit that we have set for small works roster? I'm asking.
Thank you, question. Total contract, this is intended to be multiple.
Multiple projects.
So not to exceed, not to exceed, but we're not going to be violating our own policies by having this amount reauthorized as the individual amount would obviously be somewhat smaller.
If there is a contract that would exceed the small works amount, would.
You'd come back to us if an individual project above the $35,000, this is merely a budget.
If we went above the $35,000 and they were the winning bid, we would not need to come back because we have a contract. If they are not the winning bid, then we would bring the other contract forward. We would go through the same process for each project, but if they are the winner, then we already have the contract set, not to exceed 300,000.
Okay, I understand, I just wanted to make sure we weren't violating our own financial policies. We are not.
Further? Motion before it is to approve AB 22-140, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust in an amount to exceed $300,000, form and content acceptable to the city attorney. Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries, it is unanimous, thank you for that. At this time, we'll move on to mayor, council, administrator concerns and initiatives. I think for a change, I'll turn to my left, Mr. Loudonback?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And Ms. Miller?
This is my opportunity to wish everybody a happy, safe Thanksgiving.
Mr. Godhealth?
Let's wish everybody a happy, safe Thanksgiving, and please, again, it's getting darker at night, we're still walking. Please watch our crosswalks, I know we've got a new one that was recently put not in our community, and I think we'll need to watch when people are.
Ms. Holland? You're all good.
Yes, and I'll have to have some conversations with our Valley Center Stage team. Okay, so yeah, I would like to announce that Valley Center Stage will be performing new adaptation of Christmas Carol, A Ghost Story, Christmas by Charles Dickens. It's a new adaptation, new directors, and the production opens up December 2nd and runs through the 18th. If my recollection serves, Valley Center Stage has added some additional matinees, and I believe there are one or two days where it's a double header. So we're trying to increase the performance numbers, please turn out.
Simply a nod to staff, in particular, Brian Aaron, for once again successfully administering an AV miracle in producing a meeting that I think online has proved successful. I know it's been stressful to you all, and it's a little hit and miss, but it's also, I think, outside of your pay grade, frankly, and the fact that you continue to show up with smiles on your faces and do what you do to help us communicate and be present in the homes of our constituents is invaluable, and I just want to acknowledge it. I do, I'll circle back to the beginning of the night, a long time ago. The new hires in the police department, the mental health professional is a great step forward and worth circling back to tonight, thank you.
And Mr. Rosen?
Actually, Alan figured something out, I've been meaning to thank Derigos and Public Works Department, Mountain View and Si View, the crosswalk that Alan had mentioned, that new crosswalk. I said a great job, and I want to commend you for being receptive to input from the community and quickly working with them and making solutions. You constantly made adjustments to that, and I think the end product is fantastic. Thank you for listening and taking the time to communicate with everyone, making those adjustments and as well, so thank you, great project, and it shows that city, we can do things right. I really appreciate all your effort, everyone in that.
Rosen, Mr. Miller?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Council, just a few, few quick things here. One thing I wanted to share was this past Saturday, I participated in our annual Arbor Day tree planting. And this year was devoted to restoring an area where Tanner Road used to meet North Bend Way, but is now a raised planting area next to the river. We had a great turnout, including local scout troops, staff, members of the Mountains to Sound Greenway, and residents from as far as Fall City and Woodenville. And when I ask the different folks why they came all the way here for this planting, was essentially, hey, the health of the river is important to me too. It's a reminder, those who truly care about our environment, including the precious Snoqualmie River Basin, are engaged in positive ways to offset our impact. They're involved, they're out. Parks Commissioners and city staff will be holding a parks workshop on Wednesday, November 30th, 6:30 PM here at City Hall, discuss updates to the parks element, the city's comprehensive plan. Public is invited to attend and encouraged to provide feedback about existing and future creation, land, trails, and facilities. Bonus refreshments will be provided. Please save the date, Saturday, December 3rd, for our annual holidays and tree lighting event. This free event will be held from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in downtown North Bend. More information about the event will be available soon on the North Bend Downtown Foundation website. Also on December 3rd, Si View Metropolitan Park District will be holding their annual Holiday Bazaar, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Si View Community Center. There is no admission fee to attend the bazaar, which features handcrafted items, tasty treats, haffles, and entertainment. Only to do in North Bend on the 3rd. Encourage the community shop local and to support small businesses, there will be a Shop Small event being held on Saturday, November 26th in town. Following day, North Bend Art and Industry will be holding an artist Sunday, noon to four at Rain Depot. Those interested in viewing and purchasing art, local artists and authors. I'll round that up, also a couple of announcements here. We will be canceling the regular city council work study scheduled for November 22nd. However, as we know how much you want to be with us, we will be holding a special council work study on Tuesday, November 29th here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. And at this time, we are going to move into executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30, 110, 1I, and property acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30, 110, 1E. And property acquisition, soon to RCW forty-two dot thirty-one-ten-one-E. We will be an executive session, approximately thirty minutes. There is no action coming out of this executive session, and so we will. End the meeting, uh, excuse me, not adjourn the meeting, we will ending the recording at. Very much.